Always wanted to do that. All right, are we ready? This is June the 13th, 2024, our city council meeting. We'd like and welcome you to our council meeting in the interest of time efficiency and ensuring that everyone who wishes to address the council is given the opportunity to do so the following week. Apply to all comments made by the public. If you desire to be recognized by the chair, we ask that you please fill out a request form and you'll present it to the city clerk present here in council chambers. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes to address the council unless this time is extended by the mayor or by questions from members of the council. Groups shall designate a spokesperson to avoid repetition of comments. Every effort will be made to avoid interrupting speakers, and we thank you for participating in your city government. We ask that if you will, please now silence all electronic devices. With that, I call this council meeting to order. Could we all please stand for our invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance to follow? We'd like to welcome Father Derek Soldana. Did I pronounce that correctly? I'm having a tough time with these names. Come on up. It's good to have you here. He is the father at St. Thomas Aquinas Catholic Church and a dear friend.
So before we pray, I'd just like to say it's a pleasure to be a Catholic priest in St. Cloud because St. Cloud was a real saint, recognized in the Catholic Church. He was the grandson of King Clovis I, who was the first Frankish king to be baptized, and he lived a life of selflessness. He renounced his riches, he renounced his royalty to go and serve those who are less fortunate. So today we pray and we ask the Lord to give us the grace to be selfless like St. Cloud, after whom our city is named. So let us bow our heads now in prayer. The name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit. Lord, we give you thanks and praise for this day. We thank you for our beautiful city of St. Cloud. We thank you for all the residents. We thank you for our city council members and the city officials who work so hard to make this a beautiful place. We ask your blessings today in a special way upon this meeting. We ask you to give us the wisdom and knowledge that we need. We pray that all of us, the residents of this beautiful city, city officials, and city council members, will be inspired by the life of St. Cloud and that, like him, we too may be able to focus less on the material things of this world and focus more on loving and sharing what we have with others. Fill us with a spirit of gratitude, fill us with a spirit of love, so that we can spread your joy to all those we encounter. Bless our city, protect it from all harm, and continue to make it a beautiful place to live. We ask this in your most precious name. Amen.
Please join me in pledge to the flag.
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We've seated. Again, thank you, Father Derek, for that moving invocation. We need to get you up here more often. That was excellent. Thank you. At this time, we'll have our roll call. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Blackwell?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Here.
Councilmember Urban?
Here.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Here.
At this time, our city manager, do you have any updates to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Off of the consent agenda, I would like to pull off Consent Item Y. It is a proclamation that we would like to present at the next city council meeting.
Okay. You said you want to pull Y?
Y.
Okay.
Public hearing number one, the arts ordinance. I think there's still some work that we should do on this ordinance, and I would like to ask the council to put this on the agenda for our workshop next Thursday, June 20th, and continue the adoption of the ordinance to the July city council meeting.
What is the pledge of the councils? Does she entertain a motion on that?
Yeah, we'll need to read the title and then take a motion to continue.
All right, just read the title of the whole?
Just the title.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please read that into the record?
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2023-51, an ordinance of the city council of the city of St. Cloud, Florida, amending Chapter Four, Site Design and Development Standards by adding a new article title, Article 10, Public Art, providing for public art requirements for certain residential and non-residential developments, and also includes effective severability, scribner's error, conflict, codification, and an effective date.
I'd like to make a motion that we move this to our workshop as well as the July council agenda. I have a second.
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 Oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think you might have beat her just a little bit. Mr. Gilbert, we have a second, a motion from the mayor, a second from Mr. Councilman Gilbert. I'd like to ask our Madam Clerk, will you please take a roll call vote on that?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And the Public Art, Article 10, has been moved and continued. Do you have anything else?
One more, just a note of information. Council Action Item Number 10, which is the first reading for the annexation of the Live Oak subdivision, I just wanted to let those in the audience that are here for that know that we don't take public comment on the first reading, and that will be coming forward on July 18th, and that's when you'll have an opportunity to have public comment. I didn't want you to sit through the entire meeting unless you would like to and learn more about St. Cloud. That's all.
Matter of fact, if you're here for any of the council action items with the expectation of being to speak to those items under council action, these are first readings, and they will simply be read into the record. We will not be receiving public comment on these items, except for the very first one, there will be some public discussion there. Okay? Anything else?
No, thank you.
At this time, we will have a presentation.
Abismo, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. Abismo Alabreo, City Manager's Office. On March 25th, the city of St. Cloud suffered a cybersecurity incident. This was on chartered territory. What was supposed to be a routine Monday morning turned into an emergency situation. This was a day filled with uncertainty and stress, yet city leadership felt extreme confidence that the organization was going to come out on top from this event. The city stood up an emergency operations center, set restoring priorities, and our IT department staff was given the reins to lead us out of this crisis. Our predictions were correct. We had the right people leading us out of this mess. Our city and police department IT personnel did not shy away from the challenge and exceeded expectations. The dedicated staff worked tirelessly for weeks to safely restore our systems. Their commitment to our city was evident. The staff worked long hours, days, and sacrificed their weekends away from their families. They did not have to do so, yet they volunteered to speed up recovery time. Overall, the city's entire network was rebuilt and improved. Over 700 devices were wiped and restored, 90-plus servers were reconstructed, over 90 terabytes of data were restored, connections to our vendor partners were reestablished, and with the help of our HR and finance team, all payroll and bills were paid on time. It is the national statistics that municipalities that suffer through these kinds of events take 30 to 180 days to return to normal operations. The city of St. Cloud accomplished this in 21 days. For this reason, I am happy and proud to present the June 2024 team recognition of the month award to the city's IT staff. Yes, you too. Don't be shy.
I think the slide may... Is there a second page?
So I'm gonna call you up by name here.
Okay.
Derek Andrew Jr. Thank you, sir. Jonathan Gomez. Lilivet Serrano. Nadine Silke. John Coons. Carla Rodriguez. Andrew McNish. Kelly Lacoe. Giovanni Quero. Frank Caris Mendi. Ronald Burton. The Cedric Johnson. Roberto Smith. Amanda Lopez. Forrest Pennington. Susan West. Joshua Myers. Gabriel Andujar. Last but not least, Matthew C. Hile. Thank you, guys.
I'm gonna point out, Abismael is also part of that team.
Don't jester, ma'am.
Did he get hazard pay?
Should. I would certainly like to commend all of our city staff. The IT department certainly did an extraordinary job and was on the forefront of all this, but all of our city staff, from our city manager down, had to rally to this issue and did an incredible job, and we appreciate all of you, your patience, your diligence, and your teamwork. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our citizens forum. Any person who desires to comment on any item not on this agenda is provided this opportunity to address the city council. Each person is requested to complete a signing form to be presided to the presiding officer prior to or as soon as is practical thereafter the person addresses the council. We ask that when you go forward, you please state your name and address for the record, and that you will be asked to limit your comments to three minutes. Nicholas Steinkamp, is that correct?
Hello, good evening. I'm gonna get right to the point because there's a lot of information to go over. My name is Nicholas Steinkamp. I'm a historian and generally humanities enthusiast, and I have recently come across a foundational issue in the St. Cloud charter I would like to be addressed. There's actually three major foundational issues, but I will only address one today here in front of you. Issue number one, quote, "All powers of the city hall be vested in the council, except as otherwise provided by law or this charter, and the council shall provide for the exercise thereof and for the performance of all duties and obligations imposed by the city law." Section 3.05. This basic concept of separation of powers is nonexistent in the charter. There is only one branch here in this local government, and that is you, the city council. Now, to put it in layman's terms, that is exactly what a banana republic looks like. In academic terms, it would be called a legislative supremacy system, okay? The problem with that is, is that this basic concept has been the foundation of Western political thought since the times of early Roman Republic, all the way to the Magna Carta and to Baron Montesquieu, who elucidated it for us to be presented into the United States Constitution. Obviously, there's no judicial branch for city governments in the state of Florida, and we have no executive branch. This creates a giant problem. This is ruled by Jacobin, and this effectively means that only three of you can do whatever you want, and no one can stop you. Ask yourselves a simple question: If you all collectively, or even three of you, decided to break the rules of your own charter, what are the consequences? The answer to that question is there are no consequences because you have no checks and balances in this system. Therefore, I propose that we amend the charter to include an executive branch whereby the mayor is removed from the council, we replace somebody else in his seat, and he has his own executive authority as an enforcement wing to the local government. This setup that you guys have here, I assume, is from the necessity versus population, but our population, if anybody's noticed, has grown significantly, which means we need to set up our government to adapt to the growing population and run like a legitimate, substantial city. And with that, I leave you.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your comments.
I'll be back next month for issues two and three.
All right, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak during the citizens forum? If not, we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. The next portion of tonight's meeting is the consent agenda, which contains items that have been determined to be routine and non-controversial. If anyone in the audience wishes to address a particular item on the consent agenda, now is the opportunity for you to do so. Additionally, if staff or members of the city council wish to speak on a consent item, they will have the same opportunity. We'll recognize our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Item B on the consent agenda has a list of city facilities. I would like to add City Hall to that list. Recently was having a conversation with the chamber about how nice our addition is and how the first floor could be used for more types of events, especially with the chamber, and we would like to add that to the list.
Mr. Ramazares, do I need any kind of instructions on that?
No, I think the staff is presenting this to you as a consent item. They would ask that when you adopt it, you consider the addition of the City Hall to that list of city buildings.
Thank you. At this time, would any one of the city council have any items you wish to pull or address?
If I may.
There you go. You may now. Councilman Gilbert?
There's so much good stuff going on today. Twenty-one days. That's awesome. I was very proud of that. CF and S and T, please, if I may. If I have the pleasure. Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, well, you got a... You said F and what else?
CF, C, Cat, F, Ferrari, which I don't have, S and T, please.
An S and T?
Yes.
All right, there are no other lights. Mr. Gilbert? Would you like to start with item number C?
I'm sorry. Sean wants to hit his button. Sorry, Mayor. Sean hit his button.
Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see the button. There it is. Mr. Fletcher, what do you have?
I'd like to poll P as in Paul and R, please.
Give me a second. P and R?
Yes, sir.
Are we done? All right, Mr. Gilbert?
Yeah, in C, the loan for $460,000 is for affordable housing, and I know, as mentioned earlier, that we're having a tough time with it, but this is a loan that will be repaid at interest rates, so this is a good thing for affordable housing. I just want to go on record and note that by reading this, this is a good thing for St. Cloud to afford affordable housing. This is a loan, not a gift, and we will be receiving that back with interest. So I just want to be on the record with that. Mayor, if I may?
Thank you.
And then F?
Item F, please.
Yeah. I read the historical preservation plan, and I encourage everybody in this audience and everybody listening to read it also. It was very detailed, and it was awesome. It's really gonna expand our historical preservation for the city and the houses and the buildings that are in the historical preservation. So sometimes we always talk about the negative, but the positive was the report was phenomenal. It was a great report. Read it thoroughly. It's on public records. Is that right, city manager, that anybody can read that?
Yes.
Or is it gonna be available? Okay, I just, again, want to put that on record.
Let's you go ahead to item number S while you've got the floor, and T.
Again, as a business person, I just want to go on record again, and we have a $15,000 contingency plan. They bid it at $94,000, but they say, hey, we may need some extra money, so we're gonna put $15,000. I understand that's the way it works, but I'd really like to work on bids and holding our contractors responsible for those bids without contingency. The private sector works on a bid, and no matter what the rising costs are, or no matter what the incidents are, they have to go to the bids. If anybody's received a proposal, bid for services in the private sector, it's up to the contractor or the vendor to make sure they put those contingencies in the bid itself, not saying, hey, if we mess up, hey, give us an extra money. So I just want to go on record, if we can look at, and I don't know if we can in government, to try to eliminate some of the contingency plans and say, if you want to bid on it, bid on it, and you have to come in those numbers, however you do that. We have a lot of people we employ through this city, and it's a taxpayer money, and I just want to put on record if we can save that. If it's a mistake of the contractor, which we've seen before in other areas I'm not gonna talk about, I think it should be their responsibility, not our responsibility, for their not bidding those jobs properly.
I believe that during construction, there was a condition that was unexpected that was discovered. I can have staff explain what it was. I'm trying to pull up my agenda. Stephanie, could you tell the council what happened? But yes, we will work on ensuring that our bids are strong.
And I get it, stuff happens, but it's up for the vendor and the contractors to understand that, and when they're bidding with knowledgeable, professional bids, because if not, we could bid low, contingency could make it right to those bidders. So I understand it. I'm just trying to figure out a way, and it may not happen, but if you bid a certain number, come in at that number. If it's your problem, that's great. If there's a certain problem that you didn't look at, well, you need to look at it before you put your bid together. That's the only thing I'm trying... I don't know if it ever changed, but I'd like solid numbers for our taxpayers.
All right. Stephanie?
Stephanie Holcamp, Parks and Recreation Director. Just for the record, that contingency is for the Veterans Park restrooms. They were built in 1952, and when they were... They have to... They were... Need to change out the toilets. When they took the toilets out, they realized that the piping was too small. We have to bring it up to code, so... And they have to dig a ways out to get to the clean out. That's what it's for.
And I understand that, but $100,000 for toilets? Look at the bid, look at the job, and try to bid. I'm just... It may never happen, but I would just like to see us hold those contractors to their original bid. Not that it may happen, may not. This is government, but I would just like to look at them, please.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Matheny?
So I have a different opinion on it because I work with the construction contracts all the time, and so the contingency isn't for stuff that the contractor messes up. The contingency is for unforeseen conditions that happen, and it always happens. And so if contingency isn't in the contract, like when it comes to the city council, it's just gonna stop everything, right? Because if there's a change order that happens, and there's no contingency in the contract, then it has to come back to us to approve it. Like, I'll give you an example. I'm doing bridge repairs, and when they got down and started doing it, they found old foundation of a bridge that was not seen because it was all filled in, so, you know, we needed the contingency to cover that. It's not that the contractor messed anything up, but I think the contingency is good to have, and I know that staff, you know, reviews the contracts and holds the contractors' feet to the fire for things that they should have included in the original bid and covered in the original bid. It's more just... There's always unforeseens. Like, they wouldn't know that the pipe was too small until they took the toilet off, and they don't do destructive testing before they bid. I just think, in order to keep projects moving, and once it's under construction, you can't, like, demobilize the contractor while you try to go find the money, then that costs more too. So I think maybe the thing is, and I'm sure staff does it, is to just make sure that, you know, they're reviewing the contract and making sure that what's being asked for isn't included in the original number. And typically, on my projects, maybe use some of it, but you won't use all of it, and then it just goes back into the fund where it came from. But it slows everything down to not have contingency. Like, she had to come ask for this contingency, which I'm sure slowed down her progress. But that's just my thoughts on it.
May I comment back on that?
Sure.
Sir Mayor? And that's why I love this council. We're different. I come from a private sector. We bid on something, you're responsible for it. If they bid on something and there's a pipe, they didn't do the homework, which I think, underground, but that's what makes this council so good. Lynette, it's awesome that we have those two different ideas.
Sure.
And I understand where you're coming from, 100%. I would just like to see every dollar of our taxpayer money, if someone says, hey, it's gonna cost you a dime, it costs you a dime, now the dime plus a nickel.
Sure.
But I understand you 1,000%, but I'd like the contractors to be more responsible for doing their due diligence and finding if there may be something built in 20s or 30s or 40s and put that in the bid, as we have to go on the ground and figure this out. So again, your wisdom has proven very well to me through this year and a half, and I appreciate it, but that's just something I want to look at in the future, of holding the contractors to their bids. And not you at all, just the way government is, and I just want to state that. Sorry, Mayor, I'm done.
Are you done?
I'm sorry. Here we go.
It's not me today, though.
Ms. Holcamp, do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gilbert, you have item number T.
I just want to go look at the roofs because, you know, most of the contractors guarantee roofs for like 20 or 30 years, and this roof here's been, I think, 20 years, and the Civic Center's been 20 years. Again, it's a 30-year roof guarantee, and it's a 20-year, and we're spending a million dollars on roofs. Understand they need to be done. I got canceled from insurance policy on my house roof that was 15 years old. That was a 30-year roof guarantee, so I just want to go upstairs and look at...
Absolutely. We can take you upstairs, and I'll have Kevin also find out.
I promise you, I won't jump.
I'll have Kevin also tell you what warranty we had for that.
Thank you. I yield back, Mayor.
Mr. Fletcher, item number P.
I wanted to make a comment on C first, if that's okay?
You can.
So item C is what Councilmember Gilbert had brought up. This is an investment in our senior housing over at Madison Grove. I think it shows the city's commitment to work with developers to provide affordable housing for our seniors, and I think it's a great item, and look forward to that project moving forward. Moving along to item P, Mayor.
You said item what now?
P. As in Paul.
Go for it.
This is, again, these three items are great, actually. It's an investment in our ball fields over at the 17th Street Parks and Recreation Center. I know that previous council has been working on this a long time, and I'm happy to see this investment finally take place. It's gonna be great for the young ones out there in the community. And then finally, item R, as in Robert, that is the purchase of a... That is the purchase of additional property behind Hawkins Park at the corner of 17th Street and Crawford Avenue. Many in the community know that we're working to build a new Parks and Rec facility there for the children in the neighborhood, and this will allow us to house the stormwater off-site and not impeding on the plans that we've put together for the master plan out there. So kudos to staff on all three of these items. This is a significant investment in our community, and I look forward to these items passing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Are we done? Would anyone in the audience like to speak to any of the items on the consent? If not, we'll have the further discussion and/or motion by council. Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of our consent agenda?
Motion to approve, including the addition of City Hall in item B.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion, Councilmember Fletcher, second, from Councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to public hearings. Item number one, Madam Clerk, could you please? Oh, that's been continued, I'm sorry. That's been continued to our July meeting as well as a workshop. Brings to item number two. Madam Clerk, you please read that into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-288, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the City of St. Cloud to include a change in the zoning designation of approximately 10.33 acres identified as St. Cloud Marketplace from HB Highway Business to PUD Plan Unit Development, generally located south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Live Oak Boulevard, and west of Tay West Drive, providing for approval of the preliminary master, final master plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility, conflicts, and effective date.
Good evening, Council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager for Community Development. The case before you is St. Cloud Marketplace. It is generally located south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, east of Live Oak Boulevard, and west of Tay West Drive. It is a PUD, a preliminary master plan, and a final master plan. Staff does recommend approval. In the background, it is a total net developer of 10.33 acres. The existing future land uses commercial, it will remain as such, with a gross intensity max of 0.75 of the FAR floor area ratio. The existing zoning is highway business. They are proposing a PUD to meet some of the special requirements for their commercial development. Again, it's about eight lots. It's going to be commercial, allowed uses are going to be commercial uses with some restrictions, and the access points will be 192, Tay West Drive, and Live Oak Boulevard. This is a depiction of the overall site plan of the project. This is also where the standalone medical center is constructed. We had a ribbon cutting on that, and it is open, as well as there will be some other commercial uses at this facility as well. Staff has reviewed this preliminary master plan as well as the final master plan. We do recommend approval. This went to Planning Commission on May 21st, in which they recommended approval, and we are asking that the council also recommend approval on this ordinance 2024-28. I am available for any questions, and I believe also the applicant is here as well.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Good evening, everyone. Carlos Perro, Kimley Horn, 200 South Orange Avenue, Suite 600. Thank you for allowing us to speak. I'm here representing the applicant. The only kind of concern or question that came up on our end, there was a, following the DRC recommendation for approval and following the Planning Commission recommendation for approval, we were notified by staff that some of the uses that we had requested were being removed from the ordinance. It was a total of 24 uses, I believe. There are a few uses, five of them in total, that we were requesting to see if there was a way that we could keep them. There, you know, the priority here is to get the PUD approved, but we would kind of want to discuss those uses and see if there's any way we could keep one or two of them, or if it's just they have to go away in order for this to get approved.
What are the uses that you're requesting?
So the ones that were removed, like I said, there was 24 total, but out of the ones that we're wanting to keep would be automobile, repair shops, barber shops/ beauty salons, convenience stores with gas pumps, food hall, and then mini warehouse and storage facilities. The, currently, none of those uses are proposed on the site. It's just one of the items that the developer would like to keep those uses on, just to make sure that, you know, land value in the future, when they're trying to sell the land, it's not something that, okay, it's a restricted use, and if a potential buyer is trying to do something, that now they're going to be having to turn away the land.
Would anyone in the council like to speak to that? Mr. Fletcher? I mean, Mr. Gilbert, you go first.
Just one question. The hospital or the center was opened, was one of the first things that I was here on and opened in, what, less than a year? They did a great job. Do you have your certificate of occupancy for the hospital? Now, are you permanent certificate?
I believe so, we do.
TCO.
Yeah, there's a TCO.
Is it temporary?
Yes.
Okay, so that is not completed yet. Okay. I would like to try to work with these developers to get those things completed because it's already saved a couple people's lives, they've told me, coming west from that hospital. So I'd like to work with you guys to make sure we continue that commercial development in a good way. So I don't know what it's going to take, but that's all I have to say with that, and we appreciate you, and all this other stuff we can work on, I think, can we?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Appreciate that.
The only comments that I have, I've had conversations with the developer. I've been out there during the groundbreaking ceremony and actually received services at the hospital, and they've done a great job. Regarding the restrictions that staff has put on it, I would be supportive of the restrictions that staff has put on there. I think we have enough tire shops and many storage facilities, and there's a gas station right there. So unfortunately, I'm going to be one that's going to request that we go with staff's recommendation on this particular item.
Councilmember Urban?
I think our city should be pro-business, pro bringing in especially small business, industry, commercial, which is much, much needed here. So I understand we do have a lot of particular types of businesses, that maybe some more than others, but I think we should let the free market do what it does and let, keep government out of it.
Any other comments from council? Since we're talking about, you know, I would support staff at this point. The only one item I heard you mention that I would, I would support is allowing a beauty shop, but the auto shop, the mini storage, I don't think would be, we would feel be compatible with that nice facility that you're building there. And so that's my opinion. Would anyone, go ahead, would you like to speak again?
I was just going to say, you know, we just appreciate the opportunity to have that discussion because we were kind of told, here's the uses that we're removing. You have until a certain date and time to respond. We responded almost 24 hours before that time, and we were told, sorry, it's been submitted, we're done with this, and I don't feel like we had a real reason for why these were removed. So that was kind of, okay, you know, out of the 24, we pared it down to, here's kind of five that we'd like to keep, but we didn't have a real way to discuss that or a real reasoning for why these were removed. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on that and, you know, discuss it and kind of have your opinions on it. Again, our priority is to get the PUD approved. We'd like to keep some of these uses. I know that the barber shop and beauty salon was something that when we first approached the city staff with this, it was something that was brought up specifically by city staff, hey, let's include this use. Now it's being removed, so, you know, it was a surprise to us, but again, you know, we just appreciate the discussion.
Okay. You have anything else?
Yes, sir.
If you'll stand by, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have further discussion and/or motion by council. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve with staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion to approve with staff recommendation with these exclusions. Is that correct? We have a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Reluctant, aye.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, thank you very much. Brings us to items three, four, and five. Madam Clerk, please read those into the record.
Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-36, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, to annex into the City of St. Cloud approximately plus? Plus negative 6.03 acres identified as Toho Water Authority Water Plant, generally located north of Friars Cove Road, south of Kissimmee Park Road, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Lake Toho Road, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of Chapter 171.044 Florida statutes. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-37, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation, mixed use to approximately plus negative 6.03 acres identified as Toho Water Authority Water Plant, generally located north of Friars Cove Road, south of Kissimmee Park Road, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Lake Toho Road, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect, suburbilities, copies on files, and effective date. Final public hearing for ordinance number 2024-38, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, providing for the zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately plus negative 6.03 acres identified as Toho Water Authority Water Plant, from mixed use zoning designation county to the mixed use city zoning designation with a mixed use future land use designation adopted by ordinance number 2024-37, generally located north of Friars Cove Road, south of Kissimmee Park Road, west of Florida's Turnpike, and east of Lake Toho Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, filing of the Planning Commission recommendation and proof of publication, suburbility, and effective date.
Good evening. Dagmar Estegara, Community Development. The item in front of you is for an annexation, complete amendment, and a zoning for a property located on 3201 Kissimmee Park Road, and it is our Toho Water Authority plant. Staff is recommending approval. The property is contiguous to the city, and it meets the requirements of the Florida statute and above the city limits to the western, southern, and eastern. The current future land use in the county is mixed use, and the county zoning and future land use is also mixed use. The proposed future land use for the property will remain mixed use, and the proposed zoning will also remain mixed use. The development is compatible with surrounding areas, and there is no adverse impact on the city's facility. It is staff recommendation to approve, the Planning Commission recommended approval, and it is requested of this council to recommend approval of ordinance number 2024-36, 2024-37, and 2024-38. I'll be glad to answer any questions, and the city is the applicant.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to these items? If not, we'll have discussion and a motion by council. What is the pleasure of the council? Beginning with item, the first item, ordinance number 2024-36 of annexation?
Motion to approve, 2024-36.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Urban, and a second from?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Gilbert? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
What is the pleasure? Can I have a motion regarding the next ordinance, 2024-37?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second? Second from the mayor, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 2024-38?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from Councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you please read item number six into the record?
Public hearing for resolution number 2024-059R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of St. Cloud, Florida, granting a conditional use for a gymnastic health spa in the industrial-I-2 zoning district on the 0.9 acres known as Soldier City Fitness, generally located north of East 17th Street, east of Eastern Avenue, west of Orange Avenue, and south of East 13th Street, as described in the body of this resolution.
Good evening again, Council. Tisha Manning, zoning manager in Community Development. This is a conditional use for Soldier City Fitness. I just want to go ahead and bring forth that this item was approved probably about a year ago by you, by the council as well. So it is a conditional use. The future land use is industrial, I'm sorry, the future land use is industrial, and the zoning is in the I-2 zoning. It's an approximately 5,000 square foot fitness facility in Commerce Industrial Park, and it poses no adverse impacts to city facilities. This item was previously approved by council on July 15th of 2021. The reason why this item is back before you is because they failed to acquire and obtain their business tax receipt and building permits, and due to the expiration of their conditional use approval, they had to come back before you. However, the plan that they had presented has no major changes to the original concept plan that was presented to you in July of '21. This is their concept plan. It shows the, an existing fitness facility where it is, as well as their new facility that will be located approximately here. Staff does recommend approval of the resolution of the conditional use, with standard language that the approved conditional use does not constitute the approval of the provided concept plan, and that a site plan will be required. The Planning Commission also recommended approval with the condition stated by staff, and likewise, we ask that the council recommend approval with the condition as stated by staff. And I am available, if you have any further questions, as well as the applicant is available.
Would the applicant like to speak to this item?
Joe Thacker, 17, South Orlando Avenue, Kissimmee. We are in agreement with everything that staff has recommended, and I would ask for your approval.
Thank you much, Ms. Thacker. Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have discussion and/or motion by council. What is your pleasure?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion for approval of ordinance number 2024-59R?
Second.
By Councilmember Matheny, a second from Councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
And it passes. Brings us to council action, and, you know, the next items on the agenda besides number one are ordinance for the council that will only be for first reading, introduction for the sole purpose of the council to authorize the publication of the ordinance for a final hearing. The council will not take final action on any of these items tonight. The council will not take final action on any of these items tonight. Full presentations and public input on the ordinances will occur at the final hearing at which the council will consider final actions for items two and following. Madam Clerk, please read item number one into the record.
Public discussion on the proposed U.S. Housing and Urban Development HUD five-year consolidated plan twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine.
Good evening, Antoinette Forbes, Economic Development Director. So, this item does not require council action, I just want to start by saying that, but it is a requirement of HUD that we have to do it in a public forum to allow anyone to make comments to our consolidated plan. So, just a bit of a, provide some context. So, our consolidated plan is a five-year plan that's required by HUD with the objective of the development of viable urban communities principally for low to moderate income persons. It's also aided to prevent the elimination of slum and blight and to meet a particular urgency as defined by HUD. As part of that consolidated plan, which is administered through the CDBG program, there's also the action plan, which you will see when we do the official public hearing. And both documents, both the con plan, as we refer to it, and the action plan help grantees determine what activities and organizations we're going to fund in the upcoming years. As I said, the con plan is five years long, and it also describes what community needs, resources, and priorities and activities to be undertaken after extensive data collection. HUD requires a public hearing in order to allow citizen participation to participate either prior to or during the public comment period. And then, once it is finalized and actually adopted, we would submit it to HUD. So, part of that process is a needs assessment. That's the data collection that we talked about. We also require to do a housing market analysis and then present our five-year strategic plan. And then, each year, we'll present the annual action plan to council to tell you exactly how we intend to spend that year's allocation. This year's funding, we received three hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. That is lower than we have been receiving in the past. We have no control over it, but that is the amount of funding we're scheduled to get for this year, but have not yet received. And as I mentioned, there is the citizen participation process for those funds. So, once we develop the consolidated plan, it is approved and submitted to HUD, and then HUD will award us the funding. That does not mean we actually get the money in our coffers, that just means that we are awarded it, and then we submit for drawdowns and reimbursement, and then they give the funds back to us. So, part of that process means that we need to do community meetings. We've already hosted a community survey, excuse me, we have a community survey. We've also had community meetings and stakeholder meetings with nonprofits as well. And then, there is a public comment period, which allows folks to actually review our draft plan, which we have copies of, if anyone's interested to review it. They can provide comments today, or they can also provide comments through email, they can call us to request a copy. It is also on our website as well. This is the QR code, which allows people to view our, that draft consolidated plan. The public comment, as I mentioned, is between July eighth and August eighth. A copy of the plan is available. You can stop by our office, or you can go onto our website, as I mentioned, and you can provide written comments to the email address that's presented above. So, at this point, the recommendation is simply to allow any community participation, if there is any, about the plan, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We will, before we get any feedback from council, would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? Have any public comment? If not, do we have any questions or comment from council? Looks like you made everybody happy.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, will you please read item number two into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code, chapter five, impact and mobility fees, article one, mobility fee, providing for a new impact fee schedule, adjusting and increasing mobility fees, finding that due to extraordinary circumstances, there is a present and immediate need to increase the mobility fees, providing for liberal construction, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with the ordinance to the extent of such conflict, providing for suburbility, codification, administrative corrections, and an effective date.
And I would like to point out that the date was changed.
Yes, go ahead.
The date was changed earlier this evening, instead of being heard on July eighteenth, like the agenda says, it will now be the August eighth meeting.
Okay, so this will be brought forward in August, then. All right. With that change, do I have a motion for the adoption or approval of this first reading?
Motion to approve.
A motion, councilmember Fletcher, do I have a second? The mayor makes a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number three, please.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of Saint Cloud approximately plus minus two point seven eight four acres, located east of Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Could I have a motion for the approval of the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-two?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion from councilmember Fletcher, second from councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Could you read item four into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of Saint Cloud approximately two point forty-five acres identified as tandem properties, located north of Golden River Lane, south of Lillian Lee Road, east of Narcousie Road, and west of River Crest Avenue, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirty-three?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilmember Urban. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilmember Fletcher, madam clerk.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number five?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation of low-density residential to approximately two point forty-five acres identified as tandem properties located north of Golden River Lane, south of Lillian Lee Road, east of Narcousie Road, and west of River Crest Avenue, providing for amending the official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication suburbilities, copies on files, and an effective date.
Could I have, entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion from councilmember Fletcher. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from councilmember Urban. Madam Clerk?
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number six?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, providing for a zoning amendment of the zoning map of the land development code of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, specifically changing the zoning designation of approximately two point forty-five acres identified as tandem properties from agriculture development and conservation zoning designation county to agricultural zoning designation city with a low-density residential future land use adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-four, generally located north of Golden River Lane, south of Lillian Lee Road, east of Narcousie Road, and west of River Crest Avenue, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication suburbilities and effective date.
Thank you. Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-five?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion from councilmember Fletcher? Do I have a second?
Yes. Aye. Dr. Gilbert's.
We have a second from councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Can't throw me off like that.
Yeah, sorry.
Madam Clerk, could you please read item number seven into the record?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a future land use designation MDR, medium density residential to approximately plus minus twenty-three point twenty-eight acres identified as Eden Living PUD located south of Haywood-Ruffin Road, and east of South Narcousie Road, west of Puffin Road, north of Lillian Lee Road, providing for amending the official, official future land use map of the comprehensive plan filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication, applicability, and effect suburbility, copies on files, and effective date.
Could I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine?
So moved.
We have a motion from councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number eight, please.
First reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, assigning a zoning district of PUD plan unit development compatible with a medium-density residential future land use designation change adopted by ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine for approximately plus minus twenty-three point twenty-eight acres identified as Eden Living PUD located south of Haywood-Ruffin Road, east of South Narcousie Road, west of Puffin Road, north of Lillian Lee Road, providing for entering the designation on the official zoning map, providing for approval of the preliminary master plan filing of the planning commission recommendation and proof of publication suburbilities and effective date.
Could I have a motion for the approval or adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty?
So moved.
We have a motion from councilmember Matheny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second, councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number nine?
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the, of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending chapter thirty, Parks and Recreation, Article One, in general, section thirty dash four, Parks Hours, sections thirty dash five, glass beverages, glass beverage bottles prohibited on the beach area of East Lake Toho Lakefront, and section thirty dash nine, smoking prohibited, and Article Two, Special Events, section thirty dash seventeen, Definitions, Sections thirty dash eighteen, Permit Required Exemptions, and Section thirty dash nineteen, Application for Permit of the Code of Ordnance of the City of Saint Cloud, Providing for Conflict, Suburbility, Administrative Correction, Codification, Publication, and Effective Date.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-one?
So moved.
Sorry. We have a so move from councilmember Matheny, a second, councilmember Gilbert. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Item number ten?
First reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, to annex into the city of Saint Cloud approximately plus minus one hundred and seventy-eight point six, twenty-six acres identified as Live Oak Lake located south of East Earl Bronson Memorial Highway, west of Nova Road, and east of Mossy Vine Avenue, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provision of chapter one seventy-one point zero four four Florida statutes.
Could I entertain a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-four?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a motion from councilmember Fletcher? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, councilmember Matheny. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Bring us to item number eleven.
First reading and introduction for ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-seven, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, amending the land development code of the city of Saint Cloud, Florida, to amend Article Three, Division Twenty-four, Historic Preservation Overlay, HPO District, providing for suburbility, conflict, codification, and an effective date.
Mr. Gilbert, since you elucidated so eloquently earlier on the historic preservation overlay, would you like to make a motion for the adoption of this ordinance?
Uh, yes, you may. I, I would. Uh, it was great reading material. I was on vacation for the last four days, and I read from the back, and they did such a wonderful job. I'd like to, uh, say thank you to staff and the folks. If you guys have a chance to read it, it's phenomenal, and it brings us to what we want to be as a history of Saint Cloud. Even though we're moving forward, we always got to remember to pass. The windshield's bigger than the rearview mirror, but we got to look in the back.
I just asked for a motion.
Oh, motion to approve. Motion to approve.
We have a motion for adoption by Mr. Gilbert. I'm going to make the second one, okay? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Gilbert? Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I couldn't resist. Brings us to item number twelve?
First reading and introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Saint Cloud, Osceola County, Florida, creating and enacting chapter forty-two, Traffic and Vehicles, Article Six, School Zone Speed Enforcement, Section Forty-two dash one twenty through forty-two dash one thirty-five, providing for finding purpose, intent, and definitions, establishing a school zone speed enforcement program, and authorizing the use of speed detection systems within the city, providing for program implementation requirements and designation of school zones, providing for enforcement and administrative procedures, providing for conflict suburbilities, administrative correction, codification, publication, and effective date.
I would like to make a motion for the adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash forty-eight. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second from councilmember Urban, and a motion from the mayor. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
City Council Fletcher, I mean, sorry, councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Brings us to item number thirteen?
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash zero ninety-six R, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Saint Cloud, Florida, approving an interlocal agreement between the School Board of Osceola County, the City of Kissimmee, and the City of Saint Cloud relating to providing school resource officers by the City of Saint Cloud for Michigan Avenue Elementary, Saint Cloud Elementary, Lakeview Elementary, Neptune Elementary, Saint Cloud Middle School, Canoe Creek K-8, and Saint Cloud High School for payment to the City of one hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and three with one cent, authorizing the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement and providing for an effective date.
Good evening. Doug Gurkey, Chief of Police. I'm here to answer any questions about this. This is just the renewal of the SRO contract, the School Resource Officer Contract. It's, uh, it's been in discussion and I apologize, it's coming in a little bit late, uh, but there's been intense discussion back and forth with the school board on this. Uh, this is going to be basically supplying eleven officers um, at various schools throughout the City of Saint Cloud. Uh, and it's a, it's a normal, just a renewal of the contract per se, but, um, I think there's going to be some discussion about some of the expenses that we're, um, spending back and forth with the school district. So I'm here to answer any questions you may have for it.
Chief, can you confirm the, the total price and make sure we, the cost?
Yes, it's not what we have on our record here.
Sorry, uh, the total that we're going to be reimbursed is six hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred and three dollars and one cent.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Would anyone in the audience like to speak to this item? If not, we'll have questions in our discussion from Council. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Um, so, this is, you know, this is a very important program and, and, and I'm happy for the city to participate in it. I don't know that the city should be responsible for fifty percent of the cost, which is kind of what we're looking at right now. Um, I know that, um, the police chief, as well as our new city manager, it was their first time going through the contract and so they were really trying to dig into the nitty-gritty of things and really kind of got the slow play, it seems like, by others and now it's given to us and we really have to, like, approve it, right? Um, so, I guess, I'm going to move it forward to approve. However, I want to say a few things and ask that we start this renegotiation and the school district can listen to this meeting, but, you know, I don't think it's really fair for us to be having fifty percent of the costs. I mean, um, I, you know, I want the children to be safe and I want the officers to be there, but I think we need to kind of relook at this. Also, this agreement has been in place for several years. There hasn't been any escalation in costs. Also, they want to pay, reimburse for the base officer, like, the brand-new officer. However, they want experienced officers in the school. So then there needs to be some negotiation with that as well. I understand, um, other agencies are getting reimbursed at higher rates for, like, maybe a median, a median, um, officer, but, you know, I, I think it's very important, but I just also think, you know, this is, I feel like it's responsibility of the schools to have the school resource officers and I want to help and partner, but I think also, you know, we need to take a closer look. So, um, if the school district is listening, you know, I want to start the conversation now and not where we basically handed it and it's like, this is our only meeting and everybody else has already approved and, you know, sign it. So, um, I guess those are, those are my two points. Adjust for the costs and pay the median and, um, you know, costs have gone way up in a few years, right? We're still getting reimbursed at the same rate. So, that's it.
Councilmember Urban?
Uh, just wanted to, uh, ditto to, uh, what the deputy mayor just said. Uh, school safety obviously is very important, especially in this day and age. Uh, we just need to, to make sure that we are, um, recovering our costs here, so absolutely agree with that.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Deputy Mayor, you ride on with that. When I went to school, we didn't have those, but, you know, Mayor and I are old, so we, we don't have to talk about that.
It's been downhill.
But, but, yeah, we, we rode our dinosaurs to school. Yeah, no. But, but anyway, you, you're so right because specialized training, and I'm a social worker by degree, that you need to have specialized training to deal with the, these children and it can't be the rookie off the street. It just can't. So we really need to look at it tomorrow for next year's. And I just a hundred percent agree with you. Uh, protection of our, our youths i- is the best thing we could have and I agree with approving this, but I think we need to look into, into the future. So I agree with you. I yield back to you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Fletcher?
Um, I just wanted to echo the same comments that's already been said. You know, um, the total cost, um, to, for our SRO program is one million three hundred and sixty-three thousand five hundred and four dollars. Um, and the school district's reimbursing us the six twelve. That leaves a shortage of six thirty-five. I know that the city manager and the chief of police has worked really hard with the school district um, to try to close that gap. Um, I believe that gap does need to be, be closed. Um, obviously, it's important um, to have school resource officers, um, in this program. We don't, we're not using guardians. Um, we are using, um, dedicated, experienced law enforcement officers to serve our schools. Um, and, you know, Officer Eddie was my school resource officer. Still remember his name to this day at, at Michigan Avenue Elementary. So they do play an important role in the school.
Did you have?
Because you were in trouble. Because he was in trouble. That's what I was going to say.
Do you know the principal, too?
Bezzedine, Bezzedine? I forget the principal's name, but anyways, those are my comments.
I just need to talk to Gilbert a little bit later after the meeting about this old guy stuff. Not so sure if that was a commendation or an aspersion.
From one doctor to another.
Chief Gurkey, do you have anything else to add?
Sir, in no way, shape, or form to the council, and I truly appreciate the comments, in no way, shape, or form are we even considering backing out of what we do. We love working in our schools. Uh, I think our children are obviously our top priority. Uh, we do utilize very high-level and skilled law enforcement officers. They're not brand-new off the street, which unfortunately, sometimes when you do these negotiations, that's the, the bottom line that we have. But obviously, if you see in this, uh, the paperwork that we gave you here, the, the pay and benefits are clearly exceeding where we're being compensated. So, um, I appreciate just the conversation itself and just more or less, uh, the homework, just to share the ideas so you can see what we're dealing with. But, that's it, sir.
Chief, may I in- interject one? Is there specialized training for these officers? I, I, I know it's a different entity.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so in addition to everything the officers go through, they do the, the crisis intervention training. Every Saint Cloud police officer is trained in crisis intervention, but they also go through, uh, specialized training, uh, for school resource officers. Uh, they have to go through that program and be certified, to be certified, to work in that school, so.
Thank you for that information.
Yes, sir.
Um, I had one more question, Chief. Um, if they're dedicated school resource officers, they're not, those officers do not, do they do anything else in the city? Are they, do you, they move around?
No, sir. So interesting point that you do say that. So when they're assigned to the schools, they're assigned to the schools. And, and again, obviously, when we count the days specifically, but I would say at least ten months out of the twelve months of the year, they are assigned to these schools. So when the schools are open, they are clearly assigned to those schools when they're open. And then even during the summer school, we provide summer school protection as well when they have the summer schools open. So some of those SROs are almost eighty-three percent, almost up to a hundred percent, basically committed to our school resource officer program. So even during the summertime, they try to, oh, my time up. So, when, uh, when that time comes, it's, uh, it's very difficult to reassign them somewhere, even for a week, because they know that they have to go back into the schools. So they're part of that school resource officer unit that we have assigned.
Understood. Thank you.
And they like to take vacations over the summer, too.
Councilmember Matheny?
Well, if that's the case, then the spreadsheet should reflect, like, a hundred percent instead of eighty-two that we're reflecting. So it's an even bigger gap than what we're showing.
Yes, we're doing our best to identify some of these variables. Um, so obviously, some of them, not every one of them have to work twelve months out of the year. So some of them are assigned elsewhere just during the summer, but most of the time, they're just covering someone to go on vacation, uh, per se. So, uh, we, we just came up with that, a rudimentary, or actually a variable that's somewhat quantifiable. It's very difficult sometimes when the, the summertime comes. Some of them work during the summer, so out of the ten that we do have right now currently, four of them are still assigned to summer school. Uh, the other ones are more or less doing, like, summer camps and things like that. So we do have them for seventeen percent of the, the twelve-month period, per se.
Okay. Well, hopefully you can take this message back to them and get more cooperation next year. And I, I think the other agencies are willing to have the conversation, too, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have another discussion? Could I entertain a motion for the adoption and approval of Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash ninety-six R?
So moved.
We have a motion from Councilmember Matheny, a second from the mayor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Deputy Mayor Matheny?
Aye.
Councilmember Urban?
Aye.
Councilmember Gilbert?
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Aye.
Mayor Blackwell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Menzares?
I, I believe you're all familiar with it because I sent you a copy of it on Monday. I just wanted to have, just briefly, again, publicly advise the council, the United States Southern District Court did enter a preliminary injunction that said you do not have to file the Form Six, uh, that came up through the recent bill. So, uh, it is, right now, so you had, do have to file the Form One by, by July first. So, uh, make sure you get that, get that. If you file the Form Six, you do not have to file the Form One, but you do have to get the Form One filed. So if you have any questions on that, I provided you the copy of the preliminary injunction. For, for those lawyers in the room, it's kind of interesting reading. It may be interesting reading for the council. Uh, but, uh, or may put you to sleep, but the bottom line is, it is an interesting argument that they ended up succeeding on in the preliminary injunction. So if you have any questions, just please let me know. That's all I have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions regarding that?
Thank you.
Thank you ver- very much.
I'm glad I was a slacker.
I'll ask our city manager, Ms. Miller, do you have anything for us?
I have a list.
Oh.
First, um, I'd like to, um, the city council has been invited, but also make sure that the public is aware that this Saturday, we're having our trail trot and ribbon cutting for the Florida Avenue Multipurpose Trail. So we invite everybody to meet us at Lake Shore on Florida at about eight-thirty and you can run, you can walk, you can ride your bike, but we'd like you to check out the new trail. Um, and the ribbon cutting will begin at nine-thirty at Ninth Street because there's some shade at Ninth Street.
Can we check out the trail driving down a road or, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Mayor, you can check out that trail however you would like.
Us old people?
Um, for the third consecutive year, finance received the distinguished budget presentation award from, for, from the Government Finance Officers Association. So we're very proud of our finance department. I have, I'm listing several awards today. Um, our economic development department, um, won the Economic Advancement Award from the League of Cities for the Economic Gardening Program. That part, program offered one hundred and ninety thousand in grants, technical support, fee waivers, and marketplace information for small and mid-sized businesses. Um, this was when, um, in response to COVID, as well as the downtown construction. Among the programs included in the, uh, economic gardening were cloud cash, utility payment assistance, marketing grants, and the shuttle service. City of Saint Cloud staff placed second in the government co-ed teams category at the corporate 5K in Orlando last, last month. So that was, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to be a healthier city. It was one of our initiatives on our wellness plan and we won second place among the government category, so we were excited about that. Um, our employee of the month videos, we started doing those two months ago and, um, the last one from last month, we had a reach of more than five thousand, um, viewers in the first twenty-four hours. So we just wanted to share that success, that people really liked those videos. Um, I, I think our communications department with the videos, they're, they're really stepping up, um, every month. We had the Memorial Day wreath laying ceremony at Mount Peace. It drew its biggest crowd in years. Our coverage of that event on social media got our biggest reach, more than six thousand two hundred. All city staff completed citywide customer service training this month. Um, that was a two-hour training that we all went through. You know, customer service is definitely important to the city council. It's important to me, so I just wanted to share that all, every single, every level, everyone had two hours of customer service training. Um, myself, as well as Abismile, attended the Florida City County Managers Association two-day conference and we learned a lot of ideas that we're coming back and trying to implement. U.S. Senator Rick Scott is holding mobile office hours in the PD conference room next Thursday, June twentieth, from one to three-thirty to help residents with issues related to federal agencies. Earlier today, uh, the mayor and I participated in the county executive advisory group meeting. Um, and the predictions are for an above-normal hurricane season, so wanted to make sure the city council is aware. Our public works crews have been making sure we're ready for hurricane season. They're already starting to work clearing ditches, storm emblems, and making repairs to all of our stormwater lines. The New York Avenue repairs are grow, are going well. They've completed from Tenth Street South, past the intersection of Eleventh in the southbound lane only. Crews report the businesses and residents are appreciative of the work as well as the schedule because we're trying to do the work between seven and twelve to minimize the impact on the businesses and, and it sounds, it seems like that schedule's really working for everybody. Um, the last council meeting, I was given direction to look at removing the, um, lakefront park dumpster enclosure that was in front of the paddle boat. Staff has evaluated it and we've determined that we don't need that dumpster enclosure, so we're going to go ahead and remove it. Um, we're going, we're just going to use special event garbage cans and we're going to store them in an enclosure on the empty New York Avenue lot. Also, um, at the last meeting, I was given direction to look at moving the fence at Veterans Park to make additional room and we have two options for the city council's consideration. If, um, we could share. Henrietta? Um, so, the first option, A, um, would add the park, this is, this was the original request from the city council, adds thirty parking spaces on the grass, um, and it is an estimated cost of thirty-five thousand to forty thousand dollars in materials plus in-house labor. We would also have to, um, lose three trees, um, in the process. So, that was the first option. That was what city council asked us to look at and staff, um, decided to look and see what other options they may have. Second option, B, is instead to do the parking along the rear of the park, along Fourteenth Street, and we would only have to relocate the existing chain-link fence and add a new chain-link fence. No trees would have to be removed. It adds forty spaces, um, although, I guess twenty of those are currently already being used by people parking on the grass, so it's really probably only adding twenty spaces. Um, estimated cost is only fifty-two hundred to fifty-seven hundred dollars plus our, our in-house labor. I have money within the existing parks budget for this option. We do not have it budgeted for the other one. The other option would require a budget amendment or we could look at doing it in next year's budget if the city council so chose. Uh, and so I'm looking for further direction.
Gee, that's a hard decision. I think, is there, is there any council member that's against option B?
I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm not against it. But, um, you, you know, I guess I, I've been talking to the city manager and stuff and I was like, well, when I was a kid, we, we used the band shell. You know, like, when I was a kid, like, I think my middle school band recitals were in the band shell. And then the cattle country cloggers, if anybody remembers them, they would do their performances. My friend was a cattle country clogger. I was jealous. That's a true story. Um, and they would do their, you know, recitals and stuff in there and I, you know, obviously, we got there. I don't know, you know, I probably rode my bike, who knows, you know, back, back then. But, um, I was just like, you know, this park seems very underutilized and is it underutilized because there's no parking? Or is there really, because it's got a lot of things in it already and, and now the road is so much closer to the band shell, you probably can't even use it like you used to be able to use it because of the traffic volume and how the proximity, you know, chicken or egg, right? Like, is it not used or because of the parking or is, anyways? So, I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to trying this out. I wouldn't want to put, like, I would just want to leave it grass to begin with because just see if it's used and stuff, because I know we always shoot down grass parking, you know? Like, I guess that's against our city ordinances and stuff. Like, every time we talk about it, it's like, well, that's not per city ordinance and do we want to be the leaders or the exception to what we're trying to do in the city and, you know, it becomes that. But if we just moved it and then evaluated it, see, like, do we have people using it? It, does it bring more activity? I understand there's only one or two events that occur in this space and, and there's not really a parking shortage for those events because of the way they spaced over the day. Um, but that was just, that was just my two cents. I'm, I'm fine with this one. Just move the fence and, like, see what happens. I wouldn't do any, um, additional work out there. Just provide the space.
So have, Matheny confused you even more now?
No, I think, I think Ms. Matheny is saying, go ahead and relocate the existing chain-link fence, but before we add a new chain-link fence, see if people park there. Um, that, that's what I under, that's what I understood.
Just evaluate it and see, is there a need for it and?
Sounds good. Are there any objections to that? Any more comments?
My, my only comment would be maybe we could put some signage in to say, hey, you can park here, just so people know that, that there's parking there.
Okay.
That would be why?
If you put free.
Ken's all over it. If it's free, it's for me.
So we will remove the fence, um, we'll add signage, we'll observe. If we see that it's actually increasing the need for parking, then, then we'll go ahead and put in another chain-link fence, um, at, at that time.
They'll start driving around in cars.
And I have one last item. Um, as you may have noticed this evening, the dais was a different configuration. This is how it used to be in, in the council chambers. Um, I think it gives the city council the opportunity to see each other's faces a little bit more. Um, when we used to have this configuration, though, the city council did not all sit centered. Um, but we wanted to try that tonight, so I just wanted some feedback. If, if you like this configuration, the way it used to be, the council actually was all on the side, um, which means one council member ends up in the penalty box.
Is that what this is?
I, I like it.
I feel like I can see, can see the guys, yeah.
I enjoy it because the mayor stopped kicking me because he's.
I don't kick you enough.
Great.
Could, could we move him on a little bit further?
Can we switch four or five, please?
Put him in the penalty box.
In the penalty box.
He's got Plexiglas.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Fletcher?
Um, so I actually, um, I do have something. Um, I'd like to add an item to the agenda to discuss the legal services that are rendered to the city. Um, so if we could, um, I'd make a motion to add that to tonight's agenda, if possible.
Mr. Menzares, can, we just need to vote to add or nod?
Well, he needed a second for his motion.
All right, I'm indecisive, gentlemen. Do we have a?
I don't understand, uh, can you?
Elaborate on that?
Could you please? I'm sorry, sir.
I, I think that the city would be, um, better suited, um, and served by a full-time city attorney, um, and a city attorney's office that was dedicated a hundred percent, um, to city business. and a city attorney's office that was dedicated 100% to city business, for all city business. I think Dan's firm's done a great job, but I just think that we are outrunning that and we need to bring that office in-house.
Okay. Thank you for your explanation.
Okay. We have a motion to add this item for discussion?
Tonight, yes.
To this, to this meeting. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Well, I was just gonna say, I'm happy to discuss. I think we'd be more suited for a workshop on this item to look at options on how that transition would happen. That's my only comment.
I need a second if we're gonna discuss.
If I may, you really only need a second if you're gonna take action. So if you're just gonna have discussion, you don't necessarily have to have a motion to have discussion. Any council member can bring up something and just ask for discussion on.
So, discuss.
My concern is, is that we have worked very hard on updating all of our plans, all of our, all of our maps. We're going through all of this stuff. I believe that we could speed things up if we had somebody that was dedicated full-time to our city. That, I believe, you know, Dan, at some, he's not gonna be the, you know, around forever. And I believe that that transition will eventually take place. I'd like, personally like to see that transition start sooner rather than later so that we're prepared for that once all of our updates and our plans do eventually get approved. You know, we are growing. We're a large city. We're gonna be approaching 100,000 residents in no time. And I believe that we need a full-time legal staff to be able to manage those items. And that's really the discussion that I would like to have with council. I know that Dan serves, you know, other, another municipality. And in my opinion, no, nothing against Dan, but if he's approving items and reviewing agenda items and procurement items for another city, that's time that could be spent on our, our items to be able to move our strategic plan and mission and vision of our city forward in a more efficient manner.
Is this open for discussion?
It's open discussion.
Okay. Futuristic. We're planning for the future. I truly believe this should be a discussion with that, with a full-time council at one point. I don't know when, but as we grow, there may need to be a full-time council also. So maybe those two go together as our city grows, maybe five years. I don't know. But I know as our growth is, the opportunity for a full-time council may happen. I'm lucky to be retired. I know dinosaurs. But, but I spend more time working here than I did when I had a job. No. But, I mean, that could be something, as council, and it's so great to be able to talk in open forum with you all, that's something that we really should project down the line. We have a plan for 2045. And I'll be pushing up daisies. But we need to plan for council and lawyer and everything for full-time at one point with our growth. So that's, it's open to me. I'm glad you brought that up. But not only the attorney, but also council, that at one point, maybe 10 years down the line, we may need that. Just open, open discussion. I don't have any answers.
Councilwoman Urban?
I was gonna say, you don't spend full-time here already because I'm pretty sure I do.
I'm slow.
I would like to add this as a topic of discussion at a workshop coming up because I do think with the way that our city's growing, and I've, Mr. Mazzaris and I have met and discussed this, I think that as our city grows, as the need to have more full-time help here, we should look at transitioning to somebody who can focus completely on St. Cloud as a city. But I would like to have a more in-depth conversation at a workshop coming up.
Any other comment? I would like to say that this issue was brought up several years ago. We had a major study done that also examined the cost. And, you know, it was highly recommended that we stay with what we have, both financially as well as practically. There just wasn't a particular need at that time. However, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking at anything that would, might be in the better need of the future of our city. I don't think this would be an immediate need that we have. But again, that would be another study that needs to be done. You need to pull staff in. And I think it would be a work, a major workshop that would have to be addressed. Councilmember Matheny?
Thank you. Well, I want to say, I'm a Dan fan. And I was gonna make a bracelet, like, what would Dan do and wear it? I told him, I told him that a few years ago. I think Dan's done amazing job for the city and his institutional knowledge is second to none. I mean, Veronica's creeping up on him, which she's got like 20 years, right? You know, like the mayor mentioned, I mean, this was brought up, like, what, six years ago or so? And we looked into it. And, you know, I guess I would just want to know, is there, I mean, Dan always is very responsive to me and anything I need and timely. And, I mean, I don't see any kind of a gap. I mean, if you guys want to have a workshop, you know, we'll participate in it. But, and I think the numbers were like astronomical when you brought on a full-time attorney's office. It was like in the millions, like million, million and a half, because just bringing in all the different things. The other thing we get from Dan and his service is a full bench of attorneys. So like, at my job, we have, like, county attorneys, but then the county attorneys don't do all the stuff that goes to court and all the things. And then we've got all these other attorneys. I'm in a lawsuit right now at the county. And so we have outside counsel representing us. And we kind of have like a one-stop shop here. So, you know, for me, I like Dan and I think he does a great job. And I think we're lucky to have him. So, but if we need to have a workshop, we can do that, too.
I don't know if I got it wrong, but I don't think it's a Dan thing. I think it's a futuristic look at how St. Cloud's growth. He's been a great advisor to me legally and looks out for our best interests. And there's nothing better than experience. I, staff to me and my business experiences everything. And answering questions just because you've been around is a good thing. So, but futuristic, if we're gonna put a master plan together through 2045, and it's 2024, well, we might want to look at what's gonna happen in 20 years after the mayor and I are gonna have a, well, we're both.
Nathan is gonna be depressed after this meeting.
It won't help. It won't help. Again, I'm thoroughly pleased with the provisions that we have now and the job that our current city attorney is doing. I don't think you're gonna be around forever no more than I am, obviously. It certainly wouldn't hurt us to think about the future. I think the council would be well-served to pull up that study, even if it's six years old, and look at it. I think you will be.
Surprised.
Quite surprised. And I think part of the workshop is you gotta pull in staff. You gotta ask the city manager, you know? You're the one who taps into, you know, legal assistance the most. And so you'd have to have a big voice in this matter. But I'm certainly not opposed to discussing the future and what's best for the city in the future after I've croaked and Dan has done the same. Anyway. So where are we landing here?
I think there was direction for, I think I had multiple nods for a workshop.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I would like to know, do you want staff to have anything prepared for that workshop? Or are you just going to discuss?
I'd like to see that study that they said six years ago. I'm sorry, just, because I have no data and we live on data.
That's the easiest thing I can provide.
Right. And also, I have family members that are lawyers. And sometimes when you have a smorgasbord of lawyers, it helps because they're professionalism in certain categories. And that's a great thing to draw from, being land entitled, being defense. I mean, that's great to have a smorgasbord of attorneys. I'm not saying eat it, but I'm saying, you know, I'm talking about the blood through that.
Okay. I did have one more comment, Mayor.
All right.
If we could, you know, in preparing for that workshop, if we could reach out to the city of Kissimmee and other municipalities and have a comparison of what our legal services cost as far as all-encompassing, whether it be property closings, union negotiations, and the list of items overall, not just, say, you know, there's a lot of things that is not in the contract with Dan's firm, so that we could compare the overall costs of legal services that the city needs to function. And then the intent is to, you know, in our strategic plan, the top items that we had was economic development, et cetera, et cetera. Well, to be able to achieve those items, there has to be speed involved. If we're going to increase our commercial tax base and move things along faster and quicker, we have to have more services to be able to provide that. And a lot of times, I know a lot of things get held up in legal. When I, when I, when I ask, you know, sometimes for items, it's like, oh, it's stuck here. Oh, it's stuck here. It's stuck here. And it's like all funneled. So, so just trying to look out and see how we can make things go faster. Government is slow to begin with. You know, sometimes going too fast, then you get yourself in some legal battles. I understand that. But I do think it would be better served with, with, with somebody who was full-time under the umbrella of the city.
Thank you. Councilwoman Matheny?
Well, I thought Mr. Fletcher was gonna bring this up, but I wanted to give kudos to the Proud in the Cloud event that happened last weekend. I stopped by and my goodness, it was a great, great event. So hot. I almost was gonna go like, y'all should do this another month, but I guess you can't. So, so hot. Great event, well-attended and well-organized and great entertainment. I wish I could've stayed longer, but I was so hot. The only thing, and I talked to the city manager about it, has nothing to do with the event per se, but just, you know, a large event that's happening down at the lakeshore. I got some complaints about the way the roads were blocked and also, like, notifying the residents. They were like, we didn't even know our road was gonna be blocked. We didn't even know, you know? So just moving forward. And she had already talked with staff about it, department heads about, you know, just, nothing to do particularly with that event, but just, you know, moving forward when we have events down there, just to make sure, you know, we're thinking about the neighbors, too, and making sure they're notified of events. The main complaint I had was just like the way the roads were blocked. People were driving through yards and stuff. So, but that was it. But it was a great, great event. I thought Ms. Fletcher was gonna.
I, I, sorry, I forgot.
I was gonna bring it up, but it was, it was really, really a nice event. And I'm sure next year it's gonna be even bigger with all the press and everything that I've seen. I saw a little bit of the news articles and stuff on it. But that's it for me. Thanks.
If you don't mind, Mayor, I would like to follow up to Deputy Mayor's comments. I appreciate the comments. And then also, thank you, thank you, thank you to the chief of police and the entire team of officers that were out there the entire day in full gear. And it was hot. I know that there was several people that, that were treated by the fire department for dehydration and they did an outstanding job ensuring that the, the event was, was safe and everybody had a awesome time. So, very good. Thank you.
Councilwoman Urban?
Well, speaking of the heat, we have the, our lakefront park is one of our best assets in the city. I just absolutely love it. And I know we're, we just talked about dipping into the parks budget. But I would love to see eventually some sort of shade structure or like, there's like shade sales. It could be done very tastefully to be looked at, to be put over the park because I think that'd be a great addition to it and add a little bit of shade and cool some people down. We got the Fourth of July event coming up. I don't know if you've been to Florida in the July. It's pretty, it's pretty hot. So I would love to look into something like that. And I have a whole vision for that park to be eventually upgrading the stage so that we can have different performers, bands, jazz bands, things like that, just to make that park more attractive, a special place to be in our city. So I would love to, to look into doing that sometime in the future.
I agree with you. And I said that to the city manager myself because, I mean, it was hot when I say it was hot. And it's such a beautiful park. Like, it could be more utilized, but it's so hot. Like, you know, anyways, I agree with you. So you got two. Three.
Three.
We'll get some costs and I'll come back to you.
That's all.
You done? Councilwoman Gilbert?
You sure? Might be a minute. One thing, Kobe, we can just rent cabanas. So we had that going on. We have no business. Cool thing happened, there was the, the OUC was occupying one of our facilities. And they are moving back to OUC. And there was a plaque for Ms. Galerick that worked 34 years for St. Cloud Electric. She worked over here at 10th Street. And then she worked over there. They mistakenly took the plaque off the building when OUC left, gave it back to the folks, her kids and grandkids. And they brought it back to me and say, hey, can we put it back up? I talked to the city manager, Kevin, and they're not only putting it back up, they're cleaning it and installing it. So, what a great place. 34 years with the city of St. Cloud Electric, to be able to recognize grandkids and kids their past. So, thank you, Kevin, and thank you, city manager. That was just, that was just awesome. The 40 spaces, I was one of the folks that talked to you about utilizing that park. I do think parking will enhance the utilization of that park in markets and things such as that because we're lacking in parks with our, with our growth of population. And that's a beautiful park. So I think it could be utilized more if we do add parking. Grass is grass because in ball fields, that, you pull up, you play baseball, softball, you park in grass. So let's try that. And $52, $5,200 is a lot less than $52,000 just for that. So, so thank you, city manager, for doing that. And I would like to thank the mayor for including Kobe and I in the wreath lane. That was very nice of you. Thank you, sir. I yield back.
I would like to thank our city council for your continued generosity on behalf of the Education Foundation. We supply a huge number of scholarships to students. And we're one of the largest contributors. And all the students have sent special thank yous to the council. And so I had the privilege of speaking to them personally. And some of the council members here did, too. And they just all wanted to express their appreciation as well as the Education Foundation for your generous, ongoing support of scholarships. I don't have anything else on my list with that. We come to our information and reports section. The first item says Thursday, it should say Monday, June 17th, there will be a city council special meeting at 12:00 PM here at City Hall Council Chambers. Thursday, June 20th, 2024, there'll be extraordinary circumstance workshop at 2:30 PM, also here in council chambers. Thursday, June 20th, there will be a CRA meeting at 3:00 PM following our other workshop. Thursday, June 20th, there will be a city council workshop immediately following the CRA meeting, also here in council chambers. Thursday, July 18th, we will have a city council meeting at 6:30 PM as regularly scheduled here in council chambers. Available for your review is warrant list number nine, as well as a report from the Recreation Advisory Committee. Their meeting minutes are available from February. With that, there are no other items on our agenda. We will be adjourned. With that, there are no other items on our agenda, we will be adjourned.